Yep.
Seven o'clock, let's go. Get in and get out of here.
Yeah.
Hey Judge, is any one of those four Caitlin?
Usually in these cases, it's just like.
And that's, I'll tell you, that's the toughest part.
She almost took out three or four of the people. Yep. Seven o'clock, let's go. Get in and get out of here.
Yeah.
Give her. Make us feel comfortable and whatever. Hey Judge, is any one of those four Caitlin?
Usually in these cases, it's just like.
No, I know. And that's, I'll tell you, that's the toughest part.
She almost took out three or four of the people. Good evening, and welcome to the, welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee meeting of January fifteenth, twenty twenty. I'd like to remind everyone, this meeting is being broadcast live, it is also being recorded for use at a further date if needed, so keep that in mind, please. If you're going to get up to speak tonight, please get up, give your name, town, address, at the podium, so everyone knows who you are. And having said all of that, I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And a special thanks to the student advisory committee, who I see sitting right up front. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate having you here with us. I have to take a motion to approve the minutes of December eleventh.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Caitlin Venido is our student advisor, and she is not here yet, so I'm gonna move over her report, in case she comes in momentarily, and move right into the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mr. Hayes. Just to give you a briefing on transition, Tori resigned the other day, saying her schedule of work and things like that, she's missed every minute, so she's felt like it wasn't appropriate to keep, you know, holding it off, she passed it over to Caitlin, Caitlin found out yesterday, so I, hopefully, she adjusted her schedule, but she will be on the student representative for the district. Sitting here, we have four young ladies, who I've met with, and Dr. Jones has met with over the past couple of months, as a superintendent's council, parlaying that with the request of the committee. I'm gonna continue to meet with this core group of kids, but we're also gonna bring other students in front of you, as you deem necessary, to show you an eclectic group of high school students, and what's going on in the district. So I've asked these folks to come today, for you to ask questions, for them to give some answers to you, or give their opinions of what they're experiencing, so that you get a tangible student voice to the school committee. I feel that they have a pretty good relationship with their high school principal, they'll tell them the good, the bad, and the ugly, I think they have a pretty good relationship with me, and they'll tell me the same, but if you have questions, or if they wanna share some information with you, I think that's appropriate, so, and Mr. Venido, just stand there.
Caitlin, thank you for joining us.
Sorry.
Would you like to come right up and sit, we have a seat for you?
Oh.
And you can give us your report.
Do you have a report for us today, or was it?
I do.
Excellent, so you're right on, right on cue.
Perfect, alright. Alright, so I just wanted to say hello, and thank you for having me. This week, all of Whitman Hansen has been preparing to take midterms, today we had our C and F block midterms, tomorrow will be D block, Friday will be A and G, and Tuesday will be B and E block. This weekend, Whitman Hansen is hosting the annual tri-county music festival, a multitude of our core students are helping to set up and are participating in this, in the, excuse me, in the beautiful pieces that Ms. Riley, the conductor for this weekend, has picked out. We also had a few students go to the senior district music festival last weekend, after auditioning and being accepted. Winter sports are continuing with a bang, the Panthers are doing a fantastic job this cold season. Induction for all of the new subject honor societies is next week, on the twenty-third. We're all so proud of all the students who have been inducted. All clubs have been continuing with many different, exciting opportunities, as usual.
Well done.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Caitlin? Caitlin, thank you, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Caitlin's also part of the council, so we, she's been meeting with us frequently as well, so feel free to have them speak, whatever.
Okay, I have a few questions for you, but I'd like you to get up and introduce yourselves at the podium, you might as well get used to this.
Hi, I'm Annika Fleck, I'm part of the superintendent's committee.
Can you tell us what grade you're in?
I am a senior.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jordan Pelisier, I'm also part of the committee, and I'm also a senior.
Hi, I'm Chloe Wilson, and I'm also a senior.
Hello, I'm Marissa Connell, and I'm also a senior.
Okay, thank you for coming. And Caitlin?
Yes, I'm Caitlin Venido, and I am also a senior.
You can go join them, cuz I have questions.
Okay.
It's a Q and A, you know, this is a school committee meeting, there's gotta be some Q and A exchange here.
Let's see.
The committee's looking forward to having you come, and we're looking forward to get students more involved with school committee meetings, cuz we're looking for your input on certain things. So, you could be the next voice for all of us, out throughout the school, of any students that wanna come in and maybe have some recommendations. We would like you to put the questions to the superintendent first, but we are looking for your input, that's why we're doing this, and we applaud you for coming. This is your school, as much as it is our school to guide along, so we want your input, we seriously do. So having said that, one of the topics, and this is something you can, if you haven't answered this evening, fine, if you don't, any one of you, or all of you, you can put it out there, start times, start time seems to be a hotbed here at Whitman Hansen. What's your experience, what do you wanna see? If you, go ahead, anyone?
Um, so, the start times, I have struggled a little bit, just getting up in the morning might be a little bit difficult, but I feel that with an early start time, it's nice because we get out earlier, so that gives me a lot more time to go to work, or to stay after school, cuz I stay after until about three anyways, during the school year, when I'm not in sports. So the early start time, it can be a struggle, but I feel like it's beneficial in the overall picture, because we get to get out earlier for school.
What we were discussing at our meeting is that although it is hard to wake up early, if the start time was moved back an hour, that would most likely just mean that we would be staying awake an hour later at night, so we're not really sure if it would be too beneficial to make the change.
Okay, anyone else?
Ah, yes, kind of going off of what Chloe said, that was a major topic of when we met with Mr. Simonak, was, cuz I know, just us, as a group of people, we're all AP students, so we have a lot of homework anyways, so while it is nice to, like, be able to get up later, I do feel as though we would only be getting the same amount of sleep every night, we would, like Chloe said, just be getting up at a, or going to bed at a later time, rather than going to bed early, getting up later, yes.
Okay, thank you. Programs, academic, extracurricular, any point, the reason I'm just throwing these out, is we've gotta start somewhere, for you guys to spread it around and see what the general feeling is in the district, at the high school level, what you'd like to see, whether it be outside volleyball, beach volleyball, or something that you'd like to see academically.
I have heard a lot about boys volleyball, I don't know if that was just a joke, but, yeah. Other than that, we were discussing at our first meeting, that it would be really cool if we had some sort of affair, either in eighth grade, or for freshmen, once they're more adjusted to the school, so that they have the opportunity to learn more about the different extracurriculars in classes that we have to offer, because at the beginning of the school year, when they're adjusting to, again, like, the new start time, and everything like that, it can be hard to know exactly what you want to be a part of.
We think it even might be beneficial to have one, like, halfway through the year, when students might be realizing that they're not as involved as they'd like to be, so that way I can open them up to new opportunities they haven't seen yet.
We also talked about, we have the mentor program here at Whitman Hansen, and we talked about maybe extending it a bit more, and being more in-depth with the incoming freshmen, and to maybe sit down with them during, like, the end of the year, and say, what did you join, what did you really enjoy about the clubs that you joined, and, yeah.
Also, to add on to that, we were discussing maybe furthering that to the later grades, so I know for us, like, I had a lot of questions about applying to college, and that's something that my mentor, even though we are still friends, she wasn't really there to answer those questions, because she has been graduated, so it would be interesting to see how it would benefit from making stronger connections all through every grade.
As of now, mentors are pretty much tour guides, is what we were discussing, and we think it would be extremely beneficial to put away some time, like, enough, like, maybe once a month, for us to re-meet with our mentees, and ask if they need any assistance.
I know for me, that when I came here, I struggled a bit, kind of fitting in, and kind of finding my group at first, so I feel like if the mentors were a bit more involved long-term, it might help other kids transition better to high school from middle school.
And also, just one more thing going off of that, I know that for student council, our goal usually at the beginning of the year, is that we want all of the students in the high school to realize what student council does, like, a lot of people think that homecoming is put on by, like, the class officers, when in actuality, it's student council that puts them on. So even holding the, like, the sort of orientation, or like, fair for all of the clubs would be beneficial during the year, for not just the freshmen, like, maybe having a separate one for the freshmen to be introduced to it, but also more of the, like, in-depth of what these clubs do, and what the school is seeing, but like, the actual behind the scenes of those clubs.
All great answers. I'm hoping Mr. Jones is listening. I know he is. Anyone else have any questions? What we're gonna try to do moving forward, one second, what we're gonna try to do moving forward, is get three or four questions a week from school committee members also, and try to get some better interaction going, this isn't something to put you on the spot, it's something so we get a better handle on what students want, or might want.
Yeah, if I could just pick your brain a little bit, going back to when you talked about mentorship in later years, so you brought up the example of college, so as seniors now, you're, you know, you're in the throes of it, you've got acceptances already, you're deciding where you're gonna go, what you can do, packages, financial aid, merit, so would you, what would be a good time then, now that you're seniors, having gone through it without a mentor, what do you think your options, or what would be your advice to Dr. Jones and Mr. Simonak, as to when to begin that for the kids who haven't got, is that freshman, sophomore, junior, what say you?
So we also had a conversation in our superintendent's council meeting, where we kind of thought about having workshops during the summer for students, whereas, like, so I know personally, the Common App opens in August, and I, I sat down immediately, once it opened, and tried to get as, a good chunk of it done to start off, and I felt extremely blind going into that, because we hadn't start, started senior year yet, and it was, like, we hadn't necessarily talked about Common App, maybe like, a tiny bit, like, oh, this opens in August, you should start it, so we felt as though a workshop during the summer, where, where the incoming seniors, or the juniors this year, could go in and learn, like, specifics about the Common App, cuz we've had assemblies, and we've had guidance counselors coming to talk to us in our, our classrooms, but they're very, they almost seem, not rushed in a way, but they have to be done by the period is over, or a certain time where the teacher can still get in the lesson plan for the day, so we felt that that would be extremely beneficial.
Other than the workshops, I would say that college planning, and college mentoring, is something that's applicable to every grade, really, when we're freshmen, we don't really hear a lot about it, and everyone says, like, you still have plenty of time to make up your mind, but I think it is important to have that at least in the back of your head in every grade.
I know that at the committee meeting, we had also talked about maybe having seniors be mentors to, like, the juniors, or the sophomores, and then maybe juniors to the freshmen, so that each class, or like, the underclassmen, are getting a bit better of a representation of what they need to do, as they are going through high school, so if seniors mentored sophomores, or if even the seniors mentored the juniors, they'd be able to talk about, okay, here's what college planning's like, here's when you need to start thinking about college, or, hey, these are the classes, maybe you should start thinking about if you are looking to do this in the future, or just different things like that, so it gives students a better idea of what they're doing, because as I know some of my friends have said, we kind of were coming into this blind a little bit, I'm the first kid going to college, so I have no idea what I'm doing, and so having that person to tell me, hey, you need to do this, you need to do this, would, would have been really helpful this year.
Even if seniors just meet with juniors, like, in June, after they're freshly out of the process, and just like, explain some tips and tricks, I think that would be extremely helpful.
Great, go on.
As seniors, you're either seventeen, turning eighteen years old, maybe eighteen already, and this is a presidential election year, have you thought about registering to vote?
So, I am already registered to vote. I also know that one of my close friends, Samantha Thompson, is really excited to, like, bring in a possible thought of a, like, affair, where all of the kids seventeen to eighteen can get registered to vote, and she, she's, she's very, very excited about this, so yeah, there's that, yeah.
That was, yeah, gonna be my follow-up question about maybe organizing a vote and drive, yeah.
Um, so I'm in history honor society, and right now, one of the focuses that we are doing is to work on the elections, and getting kids registered to vote. I haven't registered to vote yet, I plan to, I just don't really know how, so I think it's a really good opportunity. It's a really good opportunity to, that we're putting together, Sam has been spearheading this with Mr. Dunn and Ian Brown, so I know that something is coming soon, to hopefully get this off the ground, and get it going for kids to register.
Great.
Good. Second.
Kind of like devil's advocate here, do you have any thoughts on what classes that are not currently given?
She done?
That you might like to think about, or should be in the school system?
I think it would be cool if we had either AP macroeconomics or microeconomics.
Um, I think an SAT prep course would be helpful, for a lot of students.
Um, this may seem like a bit of a stretch, but I am a musical kid, so I really, when I first took the AP exams, my sophomore year, and I saw that on the back of the pamphlet, where they had all the scheduling, there was an AP music theory class, I feel like that might be a very niche kind of AP class to take, but that is something that I would have loved to take, like that, yeah.
Okay, one more question, Tom?
Yeah, if you don't mind sharing a club or activity, or you just mentioned you, you enjoy music here, but something that you've enjoyed here, that you've done outside of academics, even a sports team.
Um, so I've been really involved in high school, I really enjoyed being part of soccer and track, and then I also am a big part of Best Buddies, which I think is just an awesome club altogether.
Thank you.
So I kinda have my toes in a little bit of everything, as you can see, student council is one of my big areas, I love student council, I'm a music kid, I'm in the pit band for show choir, I'm in key club, I'm in all of the honor societies, eh, yeah, trying to think of what else, it's just, everything, just love it.
Um, personally, I, I can't really keep count, but I think I'm in six or seven clubs right now, I really like getting involved here, and there are a lot of things that, like, pique my interest, I'm, I wanna be an engineer when I get older, so I'm in SEEK, I like, I'm, the environment I care about, and I also am in the robotics club, I just came from there a couple minutes ago.
Can you explain SEEK, for those that don't know the acronym?
Um, SEEK is the Student Environmental Awareness Club, and we do the recycling for the entire school, every Monday, and we talk about ways that we can better, make our school more environmentally friendly, so right now, we're kind of, we haven't had, we had a meeting, but we didn't really discuss it as much, but we're going to be discussing, like, environmentally friendliness around the lunch areas, and like, things we can do in the lunchroom, like, maybe like styrofoam trays, things like that.
Thank you.
Marissa and I are both really involved with the Red Cross Club, we started it our sophomore year, and we've had a lot of great opportunities for, number one, professional development, working with higher-ups that are part of the American Red Cross, and we've also had a lot of great opportunities to fundraise, and hold events to give back to the community.
Um, in addition to Red Cross, I've been involved for Food for Thought with a lot of my friends, and we started a garden in the back of the school, and we have harvested a lot of vegetables that we brought to the food pantry in Whitman.
Well, thank you all for coming, feel free to stay for the meeting, we're glad to have you stay, but we know that sometimes other things come about, and we, we're glad that you're enjoying your experience here at Whitman Hansen, it looks like you are, so, spread it out, come back, bring questions, bring other students, we're happy to see you, I think we're delighted with this, this is something new, and it's gonna be very good, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the superintendent's report.
So in your packets, you have the North River Collaborative Annual Report, I attend, I'm on the board of directors, I attend the meetings, there's nothing shocking in the report, if you read it over, as a, as a member of the collaborative, just a vote to accept the annual report from North River Collaborative.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Everybody understands what we're voting on? It's the annual North River Collaborative Report, discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I asked Ms. Matheson, our Director of Student Services, to give a brief report on special ed, we haven't heard from Lauren in a while, we're in a good spot, we're in a very different spot than we were a few years back in last year, special ed is still an area, challenging fiscal area, but I think Lauren has got it under, has a handle on it, and she's gonna speak to some of her ideas.
Thank you. So we had our coordinated program review with DESI, that is complete now, we had it in the area of special education.
We had it in the area of special education, civil rights and English learner education. We were commended for our submitted documentation, our processes and our overall organization. We were asked to tweak a few minor things. So as a result, I have updated our English learner handbook, which is available online. Um, and also some of the forms that we were using that have been um, updated and revised by DESI. We made ours match DESI's forms. I also reviewed with staff ways that we can improve our IEP writing um, by being more concise in our language and ensuring timelines. The review really could not have gone any better, in my opinion. And we're continuing to make sure that we are in compliance in all areas. DESI also just completed an audit of our two thousand nineteen circuit breaker claim. This was also a huge success and we continue to have precise record keeping and we're making accurate claims, which is always a good thing. The auditors even said on more than one occasion how impressed they were with our district, that they have been doing lots of audits. And that they would rank Whitman Hansen among the top five percent of districts in the state for audits that they have done. So that was certainly good feedback to receive. This is a big year for audits. In a couple of weeks, on January thirtieth, we're going to have an independent transportation audit. All of our information has been submitted for review. And the Massachusetts Association of Pupil Transportation will be coming to our district on the thirtieth to interview members of central office, of transportation and of North River Collaborative, who is our primary source for transportation here in the district. And really, our goal for this audit is just to ensure that we are doing everything that we can to provide transportation to our students with the greatest efficiency possible. So I will, next time I report out, I will let you know how that audit went as well. We are moving forward on becoming members of South Shore Educational Collaborative. This is very exciting for me personally. The application was approved by you all, thank you for that. It has been approved by the South Shore Educational Collaborative's board. And it's now waiting for the approval of the commissioner of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Once it goes through that final approval process, we will be voting members of the South Shore Educational Collaborative as of July one. So that's exciting. And this, this will bring a tuition cost savings to the district, which is all, always good news. It has been a great pleasure of mine to continue to work with our district CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. This is under the leadership of Tina Stidstone, who is the chair. This group has hosted several um, presentations with our own in-district experts for parents. That's included our EXCEL team. EXCEL stands for Excellence in Social Emotional Learning. And that group came and presented on some of the initiatives that are happening in the district to support our students' social and emotional growth. Just last night, we had an outstanding presentation by our school adjustment counselors. It was so awesome and surreal to see our three brand-new elementary school adjustment counselors, who um, we all worked very hard to bring into this district, seeing them present to the parents on all the supports that they are doing at the elementary level, as well as our um, secondary counselors that, that talked about middle and high school. So that was great, very well attended. For the remainder of the year, we have um, our occupational therapists, our speech and language therapists, and our behavioral specialists coming in to do presentations as well. I welcome any of you who are interested in joining us, it's always on the second Tuesday of the month. It's right here in the library from six to eight PM, and you guys are all welcome to join us. Budget, um, as you know, the special education budget is a constantly moving target. What can be true today could change tomorrow with a simple move in or move out of a student to our district. But that being said, tr- transportation continues to be a big financial burden for us. We are projected to spend around one point one million this year in transportation of our students. I am encouraged that through the Student Opportunity Act that was signed in November, some reimbursement for our out-of-district transportation costs is on the horizon. Twenty-five percent of eligible costs that occurred for the nineteen twenty school year is being proposed. So this is all subject to appropriation, but I am cautiously optimistic that we might start to see some reimbursement for the transportation costs. There is also a projected deficit in contracted services. This has come about because there was a few unexpected um, medical leaves, maternity leaves and a resignation that I was unable to hire by posting on school spring. They were um, specialty positions. Those people just aren't out there right now looking for jobs. So I did contract out for those people, so we will use money sitting in the salary lines and other lines to offset that cost. But overall, the special education budget is on track um, for the year, which is, is great. Lastly, I just wanted to share some of my goals for in-district planning and programs. That's kind of an area I'm passionate about and enjoy. And I've spent a lot of time looking at our in-district programs to ensure that we have a full continuum of programs from preschool to postgraduate age twenty-two. One of my favorite students turned twenty-two today and left us. So we really have students for a long time and we wanna ensure that our programs meet their needs. And we, we have some areas of need here in the district. The first is we need a program for our students with autism at the high school. We have programs from preschool to grade eight, but in order to keep these kids in district and to meet their needs, there is a need for a high school program. I'm a big, big advocate of our BRIGHT program here at the high school and all the great work that it does. I really believe we need these programs at the middle school um, to start meeting the needs that we're seeing there. And finally, um, an elementary language-based learning program is needed. We developed one last year at the middle school. It's great, it's going very well, but with language-based disabilities, it's important to really programmatically get at those at the earlier ages. So I think having an elementary program will start remediating some of the, the, the needs before they get to middle school. So those are kind of my long-term projected goals. Any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions, Fred?
So a quick glance, we're gonna be about five hundred thousand over on sped transportation?
Um, I believe we budgeted eight twenty-five. So if we're gonna be around one point one million, I think it's about, yeah, just shy of three hundred.
Do we have any uh, ideas of where we find the money?
It, it's just gonna fall from the ceiling. No, Lauren's been doing a nice job with tuitions as well, as kids moving in and out. The tuition line and that salary contracted service line, they should offset. Right now, we're okay, and that's, that's why I'm not panicking when I said we're in a good spot. We're over in transportation right now, but it seems like we're balanced, if not a little bit under in tuitions. And we might have some students coming back. I think that one of the key pieces that Lauren has done this year is transitioned our out-of-district placement coordinator. And we, we changed that position around, we put somebody else in it. And that person has been actively moving, actively working with parents and students to bring them back to school in the appropriate setting so that we're not just, kids just aren't stagnant out of district. So uh, if we need to, by February, March, if we look at it, we'll be, we'll be talking. Usually, that's, that's not the outrageous number, last year when we were a million in the hole, I was worried. And you were able to fix it. We still haven't frozen the budget because of sped, anything like that. So I'm confident we'll be able to, to live within our means in sped, and cautiously optimistic through May.
Mike?
Jeff, well, can you explain why the transportation cost has gone up so much? Do we have a con, do we have a contract with a service or?
We do, so we ca, like I said, North River Collaborative provides um, a lot of our transportation with out-of-district tuition costs. Um, and the needs of students that is growing, a lot of the schools that they're going to are further and further away. And there's less and less vendors that are providing that service. So the, the daily transportation costs are being, becoming astronomical. I have some transportation costs that are more than the actual tuition itself. And you know, that's not something we get reimbursed on. So we're constantly looking, and I know our transportation department does a great job when they're looking for a vendor to get the lowest price bid. But sometimes that is a very costly line item.
There lies Mike, the reason for the audit.
Yeah.
And we're looking at that, and we're not the only district it's hit. I mean, Lauren showed me a, a bill for transportation for a student, which was more than the tuition. Just to go back and forth on a day-to-day basis. And that happens when that, that placement might be in another part of the state, and North River doesn't go out there. We can't put two students on a van, it's a one-to-one. And uh, and sometimes the vendors, they're, it's, they're a commodity. So they, they're, they're picking their own price. And there lies the audit. And that's why with the Student Opportunities Act, if we get twenty-five percent even, it's more than anything. And twenty-five percent of a million, I'll take the two hundred fifty thousand dollars in reimbursement. So cross your fingers that the appropriations are there this year.
That's phased in over four years, twenty-five percent the first year, fifty the second, seventy-five the third, and full reimbursement from there on in, with the caveat, subject to appropriation. You know, like they're even talking today even with receipts that the budget's gonna be tighter. And they might have to find money. So who the heck knows?
Chris?
Just a follow-up question, can you guys share just roughly, roughly when you say the cost of transportation, what are we talking, dollars?
So I've had quotes from like, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a day to transport a student, up to, um, we had one student that was costing us just shy of four hundred dollars a day to transport them. And that's without, um, if the student requires a monitor for safety reasons, a, a monitor on the van, because the driver can't necessarily meet medical needs, social, emotional or behavioral needs that are happening while they're driving. So oftentimes, then you have the added cost of having a monitor on the van as well.
Not, not for not, we actually had the conversation about hiring the parent full-time to drive their child back and forth. A little bit cheaper at a, at a, at a rate, a regular salary rate. So that, we're, we're trying to be creative, but that was the one that you're talking four hundred fifty dollars a day. Very expensive.
Dawn?
So when we talk about trying to reduce the expenses of special education, an example like this where we're busing them because their needs are met at this location. There are some students that we can't meet in-house their needs, right? So that's required and that's important to that student. And that placement, we wouldn't wanna change because that's where their needs are met. The areas we can recognize savings, you had mentioned is um, like the elementary language-based, right? That's a program, we may need to spend money, but it can save us money in the long run. And um, autism program at the high school. If not, we're looking at another placement outside. And then the BRIGHT program, um, I'd just like to remind people the acronym that stands for and to explain that just again.
Yes, so BRIGHT spelled B-R-Y-T is Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. It's actually a program for all students, it's not really a special education program. It's for students who have long-term absences from school. A lot of times that does come because of mental health issues with psychiatric hospitalizations, but oftentimes it could be a car accident, a concussion, um, anything that keeps a student out of school so that they are dealing with whatever that issue is on top of being very behind in their schoolwork. And it's, um, they need support to get through. So there's a, there's an academic component to the program and an emotional component to the program. And we find that it kinda stops that revolving door of kids going back out for repeat hospitalizations because they have the supports that they need to be able to stay in school and finish the year. So that also, say, you know, you spend the money to save the money on um, the tutors that it costs while the, while the students are out of school, not to mention all the missed time on learning.
All right, Lauren, thank you for a very good report. Probably one of the most detailed reports we've had on special education in a bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. We are working now on our strategic plan two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. If you are, if you check your email, MASC actually sent something out today around strategic planning and changes in the Student Opportunities Act, which George is gonna speak to you about. The school committee actually has to become a relatively active member in the strategic plan and actually approve some of our improvements for some of our students prior to April first. Just, we have to come up with a plan for some of our most at-risk students to show how we're gonna help them to achieve success. We have to present this plan to DESI by April first. DESI has said they're coming up with a template for that, which we don't have yet. So we started a process with our team today to formulate the strategic plan for the district, but also isolating the, uh, a part of that that we're gonna have to submit that you're in active role. So George is gonna speak to that.
Sure, so, thank you. So again, we're at that time of life where our strategic plan will now become a new living document for the next three years. Uh, we, we met today. I also wanna say we met with all different aspects of people in our district. And then we also have a plan through our principals where we have a vision and we have a worksheet that's going out to all of the PTOs and the PACs and all of the staffs at the school to get um, input and to get guidance and to get buy-in from all of them. But we're meeting and we'll, we'll have a strategic plan for you the next three years. If you remember back, this is my fourth strategic plan since I've been here. So that's going on twenty years now, and we've done it every which way. This way, we're adapting and we're adopting the tenants and the structure that we used the last time that we felt were positive. And from there, from that structure, we're moving forward. Everything today, we began with a census-based approach. And our hope is that we will meet out for multi-blocks of hours in January, February and March. We will then bring something to you in March. We will then continue it and finish it if it's not finished. But in March, you will get the, what's called the three-year district plan. That is what Jeff was alluding to under the Student Opportunity Act. Those are very specific detailed things that districts are now responsible in order to remediate and close the gaps for our students of subgroups. Subgroups range everything from English language learners to people of different ethnicities, to people, um, to students who um, have different disabilities or special needs. And now, for the first time, the state is saying, you will show us by research-based methods how you're working to close the achievement gap for these groups. So part of our strategic plan, we said, boom, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna include. We're gonna include it based on the only guidance we've received so far, which was January eighth. And where it gets a little tricky is that they say, okay, the districts that receive money and the amount of money, what you have to do in this district plan will be very specific. Because they're saying for the amount of money that you're gonna get, X amount can be spent on this. Your school committee can then help you in ways to which to spend that money to increase um, achievement, especially for your low subgroups. However, it also says in it, if you're not receiving that much money, you basically have to fill out the template, tell us what you're doing, tell us what you'd like to use, use existing funds. For us, we're gonna use a lot of our professional development funds. And we're gonna highlight the things that we're doing and then extend it so that we can reach our learners best. But I wanted to take these two aspects of the agenda together because our strategic plan is coming. That's the pathway that we're gonna have for three years. Under that is a subset of the three-year district plan that DESI is requiring us and requiring you all to have input and to vote on. So we wanted to mention it today. I don't have the specifics except the overarching guidelines because the template isn't here. But please know that we will update you monthly. And then when it is finished, in a format such as this, we will need a vote, we will need an approval because by April first, all districts have to submit to Commissioner Riley. He's then free to look at it, stamp an approval, say yes, or send it back for further amendments with which we'd have to come back to you for. But we just wanted to let you know that this has kicked off where we're at and what we'll be doing.
Questions? Continue?
I think just highlighting that too, in the new S, Student Opportunities Act, our district's not looking at millions of dollars coming our way. Okay? Certain districts in this area, over the next seven years, will, will see some real financial benefit to their district. Ours is not one of them. They haven't released those figures yet, but the eyeball test from October doesn't look like we're close to even some of our neighboring districts. Part of the MASC uh, document today was about the financial plan, since school committees are responsible for the finances of a district and how to approve or appropriate money for these, for the, the improvement plans. We're gonna have money, this might be somewhat of an expense, but we're gonna work that within our own, or within our own budget and not count on any monies that we might be getting over the next seven years because they're not, they're not there. There's just not a lot coming to us. If that changes, I'll update you. If there's a change in the, in the formula as we move forward, I'll update you. But right now, uh, what I'm seeing is not a windfall for, for Whitman Hansen. Next on my, on my list is just announcing the public hearing for budget, we, we will do it on February fifth. We had sent something out potentially, we have a challenge, we're going to a DESI workshop on how to do this template and how to do this the Monday, Tuesday in Springfield. And I didn't wanna be rushed in the budget presentation, however, we will have it ready for, for February fifth. So the public meeting for our budget will be February fifth. That will be the only agenda item that I'd like to submit to the school committee that day. It's just a discussion. It's just a discussion on what we have strictly budget. We have another school committee meeting scheduled for February 26th or 24th, two Wednesdays or three Wednesdays from there, that will have a regular agenda. But I, the public hearing on budget will be February 5th and it will be budget only.
Is this document wrong because I believe it says the 12th?
Yes, I was asking for a change, but after some feedback from some folks not being able to attend, we've modified our schedule. It was scheduled for the 5th, it should stay the 5th.
Oh, staying.
It'll stay the 5th.
Mr. Small?
Could I ask, perhaps you don't even know yet, but the format of the handout for the budget presentation, will it be similar to last year, similar to years prior, a hybrid of both, or one handed out and then different information or more in-depth information, I should say, perhaps available online?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, so it'll be similar to last year. Similar to what we passed out last month with some more, with some more meat to that. And all the information as far as backup will be presented online. And if you have questions, we'll, we'll discuss it here, but everything will be there. So line by line, if the committee chooses to go line by line that night, we can absolutely go line by line because we'll have that here for you. Okay? Again, feedback, feedback last year after our meeting was relatively positive. We took feedback throughout the course of the year and we're making some modifications to that. What I don't want to do is do a seven-hour meeting unless we need to do that, unless the committee needs to do that. We just want to give you as much information of where we're at right now in that snapshot of presenting the budget for FY '21 and then following up with, with questions and, and trying to model or see what we need and what's, what's available for us to present to the, for the two towns over the next two months.
What else?
Just, I do know, you know, more of a personal level, I did receive phone calls afterwards and while people and myself were appreciative of what you had done last year, there were people that were used to the three-hour presentation, line by line, everything within each school broken down, and people were looking for that information as well. So I'm just saying if there could be a hybrid and that could be available to people that want it on a simple download, that'd be the best of all worlds, I would think.
Sure, absolutely. I'm concluded. I'm done.
Okay, any questions for the superintendent? Unfinished business, budget discussion.
So what I'd like to have, I'd like to have Mr. Tuffy come up and talk about where we're at year-to-date right now. In your, in your additional handouts, is your, is our year-to-date expenditures and revenue for 2020?
Good evening. Good evening. As the superintendent suggested, tonight's the first time I've come before you to give you a copy of where we stand year-to-date with revenue and expenditures. As it turns out, this time last year, you got the exact same information, the exact same report. And at this point in time, while I've had a chance to start to understand your budget process and how the numbers work, it really relies an awful lot on a comparison. What's the trend this year compared to last year? How do things look? Do we have any line items that seem to be terribly out of whack, one way or the other, or anything we should have great concerns about? At this point in time, there's no one particular line item I'm terribly concerned about. And if we could start with the revenue report, which is the simple one-page report that you have, when you look at it and if you compare it to last year, you'll see down the very bottom of the right-hand side of that page, it says, at this point in time, we have, we have received 49 percent of our budgeted revenues. As it turns out, the revenues are coming in and about the way we had expected. At this time last year, we were at 49.7 percent of our revenue, so we're more or less in the same range. The only thing that I need to mention that is different, if you were to look at them side by each, and that is that at this point last year, we had collected about $393,000 in transportation reimbursement. At this point in time, we haven't collected any transportation reimbursement from the state, but then again, no district has gotten their transportation reimbursement yet. There's a feeling it's related to, you may remember at the end of the last calendar year, there was some talk going back and forth about a supplemental budget that was going to add additional funding to transportation. In the end, my understanding is they signed the bill that was going to add additional transportation, that is money that's probably slowed down the process of, of distributing the money. So once that comes in, we'll be fully online and, and up to date with what we had expected. When we look at the expenses, it's, it's sort of much the same way. At this time last year, and not talking about dollars because the budget this year is larger than last year, but if we were to look and say, where, where were we at this point last year when it came to encumbered and spent funds? This time last year, we were at 63.8 percent of the budget. That has either been spent or encumbered. A lot of our funds are encumbered. If you look at the utility accounts, for instance, they're fully encumbered in the day we start. Photocopiers are something we know what we're going to spend that's fully encumbered in the day that we start. At this point in time, we're actually at 59.8 percent. So there's a variance there between those two numbers. We'd call it a positive variance. We're, we're up to date with our bills. We haven't spent quite as much of the budget as we did in years, last year, and so that's relatively good news. We do know that there are some line items we're going to have to make some adjustments to. We've been talking with, with, with SPED about some of their numbers and as the superintendent pointed out, we see the money within their budget based upon needs having changed from when the budget was presented last year. We just need to start to move the money around. It's my intention to come back to the committee next month with some line item transfers, something that was done last year at this time, but we're going to do it in February and that'll be at the second meeting if that meets with your approval.
Anyone have any questions for John?
No, that's good.
I would, I would imagine our heat bill is probably a little less this year.
Well, actually, I haven't, I haven't seen the bill yet for, for January and that's going to be the happy month. As it turns out, there weren't a huge difference in degree days in December from years gone by. And of course, when we talk about the cost of heat or utilities, only about half of it is like, is, is commodity and commodity and the other half has to do with transmission and distribution. Having said all of that, yeah, I think we're going to do the happy dance when we look at the, when we look at the January bill. Unfortunately, I'm a believer in regression to the mean, which is to say, we've had an awful lot of warm days so far in, in January and it's just the biggest part of me says we're going to pay for that in February with some cold days and in the end, it will all average out.
Fred?
On regional transportation, I think they're splitting it up in two payments.
They have traditionally given us, given it to us in two payments. The first payment comes more or less in November and December. Second payment is usually comes in usually May, sometimes in June. And in years gone by now, what will happen this year, of course, I don't know. But in years gone by, they've, they've looked at that money because there's always a certain amount of, of, of adjustments that are made as the year goes on. And often that second payment is slightly larger than, than was expected. It's never been a huge number, but any, you know, any little bit helps.
I think they're splitting it 50/50 and the first payment is due imminently.
Correct.
And then the second one, I believe, is they're talking February, March.
Well, that would be wonderful news.
So.
I mean, we, we, one of the, one of the things we get to do is earn interest on money. And I was talking to David Leary, who was, who was your treasurer, and he would be very happy to have additional funds to, to invest.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I just wanted to brief the committee on the, I met with Whitman-Fincom, John and I did two weeks ago now, presented exactly what I presented to you folks. They were appreciative of the information we presented. They asked for some additional documentation around student enrollment. We had a very, I think, very good dialogue with the committee. We were there maybe 45 minutes to an hour. It was a, a different tone than, than last year. We were in a, in a better spot financially at least, or at least there was some really positive dialogue back and forth. As I mentioned to that Fincom last year in December, when, when my first numbers were minus 6 percent below level fund, there was a different tone this year with Whitman-Fincom. I look forward to meeting with the Hanson-Fincom at some point in the near future after we present our budget, but it was a, a positive meeting with the Whitman-Fincom. Again, I didn't give them any additional information than I gave this committee as far as required, recommend, or required, restore, and recommend. You have the same numbers as they do, so they have a working number that we're looking at. Once we go through the presentation on the 5th, we'll give you some ideas around recommend, required, and what that means to us. But I didn't want to share any information outside of this school committee with people in, in both communities as far as numbers. That's, what you see is what, what they've seen.
Okay.
Did Chung want to?
Sean?
I'm good.
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street in Whitman. At the Hanson Selectman meeting, they had legal counsel there and she, she referenced that in order to pass the budget, you need seven votes. And according to her, she, she thought that the assessment would really be part of the budget. You know, so in order to get a budget passed to, to town meeting, you need to get seven votes. And to me, that seems pretty clear that it would be difficult to get seven votes with such a split on the budget. And, you know, which infers that if you can't send it back to town meeting and the super town meeting and that kind of stuff doesn't happen, it's really setting us up for the whole process to go down towards, you know, the state taking over in December, which sounds terrible to me. I think taking those things into consideration and what's recently happened in Whitman, they're definitely taking steps to make recommendations based on a full statutory method. So as time goes by, it's going to get more and more difficult to loosen up because, you know, parts of the budget are, lots of parts of the budget are coming into place and it's going to get more and more difficult to change that. I think it might be helpful to reconsider, if you're from Whitman, to reconsider the vote tonight, to maybe open up the discussion about assessment and have another vote and maybe reconsider an alternative. Not maybe the straight alternative, but some sort of alternative. I think that will be helpful. You mentioned consensus with the strategic plan and I think that's really the direction we should be going in, the compromise and consensus. And for me, I think that's, long-term sustainable educational funding will only come through consensus. And this right now is not consensus. And it's kind of easy and comfortable to talk right now, but as time goes by, it's going to get more and more tense, especially if a budget can't get passed and the 112th budget goes into play in, in July. And then, you know, level funded and all that stuff, it's going to get more and more stressful. So I think to slow down and look at the big picture and maybe reconsider that vote would be helpful.
Thank you. There are a lot of discussions going on concerning budget with both towns right now. I know that both Fincoms have been working and I know that both boards of selectmen have been working on budget, so.
Exactly.
Moving forward, much pleasure. I mean, we have nothing here in a placeholder that I could say tonight where I have it on an agenda to revote an assessment.
We don't need it. We voted an assessment. We, we voted a.
Assessment method.
Method.
An assessment method. And we're working forward. We just had this excellent meeting, as the superintendent said, with, with Whitman-Fincom. I really enjoyed what they all had to import and, yeah, I was there.
Me too.
But Sean, I, with all due respect, I think you're going to let us do our job. Appreciate you coming with the ideas, but lately the ideas have been, you know, it's already, every day is doomsday and we don't have a, a light to stand on for anything. And we're in this all together. So I, I think it might be helpful to keep together. And I, I don't know, you're, you're kind of tearing us apart in a way that we're, we're not even looking at it that way. We have no, I mean, if Hanson, Hanson wants to do an audit, and I have to agree with the chairman, I know the superintendent at first take it at, you know, as a, as a little bit of a, a slant, but you know, if they want to go ahead, go ahead and pay for an audit and do your audit and so forth. Let Hanson do that. I, I can't tell those townspeople what to do if they want to do that. We haven't even met with their Fincom, so give us a chance to do that.
At the Whitman-Fincom, they talked about keeping it within 5 percent assessment. So say it was 5 percent, what would that be for Hanson? Over 20 percent assessment?
All right, all right. Again, I let them.
So you say it's a comfortable Whitman-Fincom meeting, okay? It's comfortable for Whitman because it's within the five or even they, they made a recommendation or talked about less than five, really, making a recommendation for less than 5 percent.
You know what? Everything in the conversation wasn't a dollar. You can sit here and, and say that, Sean, but it wasn't a dollar. It was a conversation about what we do.
But the conversations that are had, there are, there are formal recommendations.
That you had, okay, that's way different than what we've had.
I'm sorry. The conversation that was had at the Budget Override Evaluation Committee just the other night, it was a three-hour meeting, at the Hanson Selectman meeting, at the Whitman Finance Committee meeting, and at the Whitman Selectman meeting last night. I've been trying to follow these things. People are making formal recommendations that are going to make it worse. It's going to, if the full statutory method moves forward, how are you going to get seven votes? Are, is anybody from Hanson going to support a budget? That includes a full statutory method. It's, I'm asking you, from Hanson, are you going to support a budget? You need to get one of their votes. If you don't get one of their votes, that means ultimately it doesn't leave this committee, which means ultimately it's going to go to the state. I'm here in front of you because I don't want the state to take over our finances. So I, I know, I don't want to ruffle any feathers, but I don't want the state to take over. I'm asking for a compromise that doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
Okay. Fred, we're not going to go on.
No, we're not going to go on. This is going to be very quick, very to the point, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay? Sean, we sit up here and we have our votes. You have your opinion and you're welcome to have your opinion. That's just great about this country, everyone has an opinion. Okay? And if you play things out, well, what if we do this? What if we do that? Okay? And now you go in front of town meeting and you have to vote a method. Okay? Because now you're going to vote a method of the assessment as well as what the dollar amount of the budget is. All right? You're taking the same whole risks. You're taking everything into consideration. I fully expect that we will come and, within a committee, and we will come out with a budget. Okay? The assessment is a secondary item that will go to town meetings. Okay? But I think we're going to come out of here with a budget and it's our job to try and do a budget that is going to meet the needs of our pupils and meet the needs of the kids. That's what our job is, is a budget. Okay? Now, we also did do an assessment method, okay? That you also look at what we feel is fair and proper as we are charged to do by DESI and by our school committee powers. And we voted an assessment method. Okay? That is what we voted, that's what's going forward. Now it's to work on everything else. And by coming here and continually going after these things, okay, all you're doing is beating a dead horse and not allowing us to get along with business. Okay? This is five minutes of my life that I'll never get back talking about something that's been discussed by this committee at Nausicaä. So for that, I thank you. I've got nothing further.
I've got Chris in the.
Thank you.
Guys, we're going to be kind of brief here.
Hey, can I just talk about it real quick?
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I'm only going to speak for myself. I think some of the points that Mr. Kane brings up are very relevant. I think it, it puts the folks that represent Hanson, again, myself, I'm speaking for myself, in a very difficult position to support a budget with an assessment methodology that isn't supported. So I think I would heed Mr. Kane's words and think them through because if, what I'm hearing is we voted the assessment methodology and that's a done deal, you had four people from the town of Hanson unanimously vote against that methodology. So to make the leap that that's over and done with and we're just going to move into budget, that's a, that's a tough leap for me to make. So I think it's a, it's, it's a good point. I think we just all need to be aware of that.
I think that's what the legal counsel was saying at the Selectman's meeting the other night in Hanson.
Robbie?
100% agree with everything that Mr. Howard just said. So since Fred's worried about five minutes, I'll leave it at that. My second question is, does require two-thirds of the committee for the budget? Because that, that was going back, because I watched Selectman's meeting, seven votes.
So requires seven votes, okay.
Requires seven votes.
Right. So I echo, I echo what Mr. Howard said.
Seven votes because we have 10. Even if there are eight people here that day, it's seven votes. We checked with our counsel as well.
I appreciate everything that I, one second, I appreciate everything that everyone has said. On tonight's agenda, I don't have anything that says we're going to revote an assessment. Okay?[1798.95] Okay? So I can't entertain that this evening. What I can tell you is, I'm very proud of both boards of selectmen, both FinComs. They're working very hard, not just at their monthly meetings, they're having extra meetings, and they're all working to come to some sort of conclusion with the assessment and with what's going on with the budget. I think that diligently, we should give them, maybe till our next meeting, or we can put it on the agenda for the fifth at the end of the meeting, which is right around the corner. I hate to do that, but I still say that giving them a little bit of time, they have put a tremendous, tremendous amount of effort into this process. Both FinComs, both boards of selectmen, and I know the administration has been involved in some of it. So please afford them some time. Don?
My comment is regarding the comment about the state taking over. And I know we have parents watching, and I know there's a lot more eyes watching and listening. So it's important to explain what that means, the state taking over, and we have a student here, too. It sounds really scary. And it can be scary, because it is the unknown. I recognize that. I just want parents and students to know, the school will operate, and classes will be held. When the state takes over, it's always in the best interest of the students, too. It's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They want education. They will come in, and they will want to help us. So I'm not saying what decision they would make. I just want people to understand, they won't come in and shut us down. And so I'm trying to help here by explaining that point. It's different from receivership. If a school district goes into receivership, it's based on underperforming grades and academics and so forth, and that can be a different climate. I mean, those schools still operate, too. But fiscal control of a district by the state is just because we couldn't get a budget, and they help us to get there.
Don, what time was that? Dykner Hobbit? Did you sent the email about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dykner Hobbit.
Yep, and that was a good article about it.
To tailor into what Don is saying, Robbie, or whoever he's watching, the state could physically come in and up our budget.
Mm-hmm.
If they determine that it needs more money, they come in and they just give you the bill, and you have no choice. And it could be even bigger. It's not always they're going to come in, you know, people have this thought process that they're going to come in and do this and do that. They're not. They're not, it's not receivership whatsoever. The school system will open in September and close in June, has it has for many, many years. So that's more of what's going on.
And they don't come and stand out front, and they don't.
No, no, you won't even know.
Put up a wall or something. It's.
Don, what newspaper article was that? What newspaper was that in? Do you remember?
Cotton Gazette.
That was a good article for people to read about it, with Dykner Hobbit.
Barry, do you have something new and different?
I was actually, I'm going to add on to the Dykner Hobbit. Part of the minutes when the commissioner got up in one of their minutes, he said, what they generally do is they come in and they get you about 25 to 30% about foundation. So it'll give you an idea, so you'll be paying a little bit of that about foundation, because that's what they're seeing as what children actually need to educate. Anything below that, you really, the state says, you're really not hitting the mark. You're not educating kids. Then, what was wonderful about that article was how the superintendent felt. He felt that it was a win-win when the state came in. It was a very positive. They really felt like it reduced stress, and they were working together. It was a win-win. So this whole boogeyman of the state coming in, hopefully, we can work it out. Hopefully, we get to the same place and focus and make this about kids. It's clear that 25 to 30% is what they're saying kids need, at least. Now, that's the at least. This is what they feel. So maybe we could start to look at what the kids need instead of this fighting back and forth, and what's appropriate to fund schools and the demographics we live in. We can get there, but don't be afraid. I'm not afraid of the state coming in after following the Dykner Hobbit. It's not something I would.
Thank you.
Could I just mention one thing very quickly?
Go ahead.
We don't even know what the numbers are. Until they're released, you've got the governor's budget coming out in the 21st, the 22nd is when you get the new minimum local contributions. We referenced the Student Opportunity Act tonight. That act is going to greatly accelerate the minimum local contributions for Whitman-Hanson. We don't know how it breaks down. The quick estimate and the fuzzy map was about $7 million over the next seven years. We don't know if it's front-loaded, back-loaded, or spread out over the whole seven years, how they're anticipating how to do that. So we really don't know what the impact is going to be until we get the DOR numbers and the numbers out of the governor's budget, and that should happen somewhere around the 22nd or so, in January.
We should have those numbers that Friday. Mr. Tuffy said Friday, by 4:30 on that Friday afternoon. So just when everybody's going home, we'll have those numbers that following Monday to start reviewing for that.
Chris? And then we're going to move on.
Jeff, do you recall, a question came up at the last FinCom meeting about Whitman's contribution last year, and how it relates to what they can contribute on, can they not contribute less than they did last year? Can you clarify that?
I can't, because I'm not sure that answer was correct at FinCom. We're still looking at that.
Right.
That they can't go less, and I haven't clarified that yet. I'll do that at our next budget meeting. And we should be able to have those numbers as far as the assessment to be able to discuss that. The question was, can, at FinCom, can, because this number was given last year, can you go back from that? Meaning, can you, can you, the number that was contributed last year was this, you can only go forward, you can't go back. I'm not sure, once you reestablish the new minimum local, because the way we were assessing wasn't using the minimum local. So I want to clarify that. John was out ill last week, and I just want to remind the committee, John only works two days a week. He's part-time. So utilizing, and he's doing multiple things for multiple folks, so getting to these, some of these answers has been challenging. We'll present a lot, and if people have questions and they want to email me directly for that budget presentation on the 5th, we're more than amenable to discuss as we go. I just, I want to say that we're always trying to put kids first, too. We haven't put a dollar figure to anything. I haven't seen assessment numbers yet. So I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse either. That's it. I'm good.
I want to thank everyone again for their patience. Budget discussions are always difficult. This has probably been the most difficult year that I've seen in 17 or 18 years. So please bear with us. I think that not only is the committee working very hard, but again, the boards of selectmen and the FinComs have been working very hard, the administration's been working very hard. Let's give them a little bit of time. We've got another few weeks. We don't have the governor's budget yet. I'd like everybody to just be as patient as they could possibly be. Thank you. New business, athletic user fees revolving accounts. Bob, Roger.
Good evening, everybody. So I thought tonight would be a good opportunity just to try to explain how athletics is funded, because a lot of times, there's a lot of misunderstanding. Through the years, the entire school district, we've endured a lot of different cuts, and the athletic department has certainly, has not been immune from that. It used to be, when I started here 20 years ago, there were no user fees, and the school district paid for transportation, and they paid for uniforms, and they paid for the officials, and they paid for the athletic trainer, they paid for all the equipment and all of the supplies. And through the years, through all the cuts that we've had in the school district, we've had significant cuts in the athletic department as well. I've had people say to me at different times, well, do you advocate enough for the athletic department to get the funds that you need to run a robust athletic department? You know, I do run the athletic department, but I'm a member of the school district, and we want our students to have a great experience. So through the years, when the superintendent would call me up and say, you know, we have to cut this, or we have to cut that, how can I, you know, deny the fact that we're having cuts in the classrooms and every place else? So it's had to happen in athletics as well. I'm really proud of the robust athletic program that we offer with the resources that we have, which certainly are very limited. And we've been able to even through that environment, increase the offerings for our students and to meet our Title IX obligations. We were really deficient in our Title IX obligations up until about seven or eight years ago. And through that time, we've added field hockey, and we've added girls' swimming, and we've added gymnastics. We've added over 125 opportunities for our girls in our school, because they were certainly underrepresented through all of that. And that's with the athletic department never coming before the school committee or asking the superintendent for any additional funds. We've been able to operate very efficiently. The other thing that we've never done, at least in my tenure as athletic director, I've never gone to our business manager at the end of the year and said, we're short. We need more money. We don't have enough for, we don't have enough for transportation. We don't have enough for game officials, whatever it is, which is actually, and having Mr. Tuffy here has been really just a big benefit to our school district because of all the vast experience he's had in this area, and he could tell you that. That's very common. A lot of my colleagues at other schools, at the end of the year, they run short. We've never had to do that, so I'm very, very proud of that. And we've never raised, we have never, at least since I've been the athletic director, we've never raised the user fee, which I'll address in a moment. But I wanted to start just by making sure that you all understand how the athletic department is funded. And there's basically three funding sources that we use. The first one is the money that the taxpayers give us through the school budget. And you can see there, there are basically three things in that part that the school budget gives us, which will be the salaries, the athletic salaries. Then we have our supply budget, which are the consumables, when you have baseballs, softballs, things of that nature. And then we finally have the equipment maintenance, which is mandated by the state. Any equipment that is a safety issue, for example, football, the helmets, the shoulder pads, all of that has to be sent out and has to be reconditioned. Those are the only things that the school district funds. The second way that we fund our athletic department is through our athletic revolving account. And that athletic revolving account encompasses the user fees that the students pay, which is $250 for the first sport, $50 for the second sport, $50 for the third sport, with a family cap of $600, and hockey players pay a $200 surcharge. So that money goes into the athletic revolving account, and from that account, we pay, and you can see the list, I kind of outlined most of the things that we pay from that. All transportation, all buses, we pay for all game officials, we pay for our athletic trainer, which we have a great partnership, partnership with Signature Healthcare. It's incredible that we can have a full-time trainer for $31,000, because they subsidize a great deal of that. We pay for our athletic supplies, our athletic training supplies. Our dues to be a member of the MIAA is not paid by the school district anymore. Our dues to be a member of the Patriot League is paid through our athletic revolving. Our NIAA, which is the NFHS, part of the National Association, fees are paid through that. All entry fees and dues for the various invitationals and tournaments, like cross-country and track, they're going to the relays this weekend, for example. Our wrestling team will be in four or five tournaments over the year, over the course of their season, which costs $275, $300 at a WAC. So any team that has an invitational of some kind, we pay for that, from that line as well. All supplies and equipment, we have very little equipment that we will buy for teams, but on occasion, we have to do that as well. We don't have any money in the school budget for either of our hockey programs. Our boys' ice hockey, ICE, and our girls' ice hockey, ICE, is all funded through our athletic revolving account. And to the tune, you can see what that costs. So that is where most of our expenses will come from over the operating of the athletic department. We also have a third funding source, and that is our student activities accounts, which are also revolving accounts, but those are sports-specific. Each sport at Whitman-Hanson, just like every club, just like history club and math club and everything else, we all have a student activity account. It's a revolving account. So when kids do a car wash, they do, sell candles, or they sell cookies, or whatever they do, that money goes into that account. And from that account, that's how, when you see a student with a new uniform, they earn it. Whitman-Hanson hasn't purchased a student uniform in at least 15 years. Not one. Now, there have been a couple of times where I've had to purchase, give them the upfront from my athletic revolving, and then they've paid it back from their fundraising. But that last, that last account is really important, because if you can look at the things that they fund from that, this is what the students do and the coaches do. Their uniforms, their practice gear, the additional equipment they might want. Scrimmages. My lacrosse coach just talked to me today and said, I want a scrimmage Falmouth on the road. You're going to have to pay for that bus, because I don't have the funds to pay for a bus to go down to Falmouth. So that's something that they would have to fundraise for in their student activities. The team trips. The volleyball team went to New York. The boys' and girls' basketball team went to Florida. We've had, our wrestling team has traveled, our cheerleaders have traveled. School district and taxpayers do not pay anything out of that. No revolving funds from the school athletic revolving funds are used. Those are all raised by the specific team that is doing that traveling. Banquets and awards are not provided by the school. That's done by fundraising. Our leadership and wellness programs, when we take students to the MIAA, coaching education programs that we have for our coaches, and other educational resources, like we have our captains' council and things of that nature. So those are the three ways that the athletic department is funded. I should, I did put a note on the bottom, just so that you all know, I will not be coming to the school committee asking for any funding, but we are losing our partnership with Middleborough, which has been a terrific partnership and very cost-effective for us. But we're not going to be able to co-op with them anymore. So we're going to be going out on our own. But we're going to sustain that program, because for those students, and there's not 50 of us who are 50, maybe there will be when we're on our own and we're closer. Maybe, I think we're going to be at Massa Soyet next year. Every single program here matters, you know, whether it's the team that everybody sees, like you go to the football game and people know about that sport. Well, cross-country matters just the same to those students. Every program that we have, all 27 of them. So that's what I wanted to just at least present to you and to anybody that's listening about where the money comes from, where the money goes, how we fund this athletic department, and how we got to where we are. And it is what it is. And I, you know, I know there's been some talks sometimes, should we raise the user fee? Well, like I said, I haven't come to the business manager and asked for any more money at the end of the year. So I don't think it's time to do that. And I also know that there are many people in our community that struggle paying that $250 user fee. Very proud to say that when Jeff was the principal, now as a superintendent and with Dr. Jones as well, we've always had the philosophy, we're never going to tell somebody they can't play because they can't pay. So there are many times that students will come and work off their user fee. Sometimes for jobs that I really don't even need to be done. But to make sure that everybody knows that you're either paying it, or you're going to find some way to work with us. And we've had parents that work with us as well in other ways. So that's, that's everything in a nutshell, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any from that presentation.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Rogers? Don?
Actually, more of a comment. Thank you for the information. In regards to the buses for the transportation, Justin Evans is a Whitman Board of Selectmen. He was here. He had given me some information about electric buses. And initially, when he provided it to me, he was thinking about the district, like save money on transportation, you know, because Volkswagen was offering, you know, because of their problems they had, grants and funding for new electric buses. And I said, well, I don't know about a whole fleet, but perhaps one bus for athletics, and it's just something to think outside the box. No, not this year, or.
I will, I will look into that. I mean, that.
I mean, if it's an investment in value and money.
One of the things that has hurt us in our transportation line is verk car rental, which has been a mainstay here in Massachusetts for a long time, and just a great community member. We used to have a great deal with them. We could rent a 15-passenger van for $100. And my golf team could go in that, or my wrestling team could go in that. And now, instead of being able to rent the van for $100, we have a bus that might have to go for wrestling for like $600. Nobody else rents 15-passenger vans. There's a place in Hanover that will rent a 12-passenger van. They're more expensive and whatnot. But that's, that's an interesting idea, Don. I look really hard in transportation. We do a lot of shuttles. We get very creative. One bus might serve three teams in the same day. They'll go drop them off, go pick up another team, bring them there. And we try to save every nickel and every dime that we can in every, in every way possible, without making people look at us like we are saving money. Because I think when people come to Whitman-Hanson, people from Ducksbury and people from Hingham, and they see the nice uniforms that our students have, and they see the facilities that we have, it's through a lot of work from a lot of people to make all those, those things happen the way they do. But I will, I will look into that transportation thing.
Would you mind giving an update on the scoreboard and the sponsorships, too?
Yeah, so we're really close to having that paid off. The last I looked, we were, we were about, probably about 15, maybe $10,000 away from maybe 10 or 15 to making the final figure of that. And where my plan for this, it was supposed to take us five years to get there. We've gotten there a lot faster. I was supposed, we were supposed to pay it off over five years, but the sponsorships came in a little better than we had hoped. What I really want to have happen is our, each team to be able to sell advertising on that scoreboard, so that when they're struggling to get those uniforms, instead, if they went and sold 10 ads on that scoreboard, where there's no, they don't have to get any printing done or anything else, they just have to simply sell the ads, then 50% goes to the team, and 50% goes back into the athletic. to the team and 50% goes back into the athletic revolving to, to replace that money that we took from back then.
Jones, and then Fred.
Can you just explain, and I do appreciate all the fundraising guys do, can you just explain, say volleyball did a car wash and they made $1,000. They spent $500 of it. At the end of the year, where does that-
Stays in their account, because that's still a revolving account, so it doesn't have to get closed out at the end of the year. It's their money. There are all kinds of checks and balances when any money is expended anywhere. So when they go expend, you know, let's say volleyball wanted to go buy something, they fill out a form. It gets first processed by Siobhan Horton, who runs that account. Then the principal will sign it, and then ultimately, the check will, will get cut. So that's how the, the student activities accounts work.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's their money. So that's theirs. They made it, and they get to decide how they spend it.
Fred?
And actually, I think we signed off on it with the warrants. Those come right through us. I know I've said it in the past, and I'm just going to reiterate. With the great DECA program that we have here, incorporating some sort of a sales program with DECA, and perhaps inclusive of some student athletes to pair people up if they're not in a DECA program, and having them sell advertising, it can be an educational opportunity as well as, you know, raising funds.
Fred, that's a fantastic idea. In fact, we had a business manager, I mean, a business teacher, Brian Mariano, I always pronounce his name wrong, who I was working with to try to talk, to kind of do something similar that you're, that you're discussing. And it's something that's definitely on the radar. Something that's very helpful for the students to learn how to go out and do something like that. So-
It's a win-win.
Yeah, it's a win-win. It helps their team and it helps the school.
Well, Bob, just anyone that might be watching, because parents, I know I've done this at football games, if you have a student, that you have a soccer player, a football player, or lacrosse player, and you want to advertise on the scoreboard just for that sport, contact Mr. Rogers. He will give you a price to advertise. Your ad will come on so many times, it can be worked into the announcing part of it, and you're not only getting advertising, but you're helping the students in Whitman Hansen region.
It really is a win-win for the, for the businesses.
It's a definite win-win. I know. I spend it. You do it. I benefit from it. I think it's a great-
Do you have a birthday announcement that you-
We did that. We, we have done that.
Thanksgiving.
We do, at Thanksgiving, we do all the well wishes. Senior parents can do that as well. It's a little cumbersome for me to do it, but we do it.
All right. Another question. The top line, what is funded in the school budget?
Yes.
Since budget is being talked about, I just wanted to go over the figures. So you did say athletic salaries. Can you review that?
Sure. I don't have the breakdown. It's, you could, so basically, the athletic salary line is my salary and all of the coaches. It does not include our athletic trainer, because that is funded in the, in the second column, the second paragraph here, but it's all of our coaches. And so that number sometimes, I'll give you an example about how I haven't come to the school to bail us out. School, actually, we had to bail the school out last year because that line was underfunded last year. So if you have a lot of, like, experienced coaches, just like teaching, there's five steps, and they get to the fifth step. If you have a lot of teachers that are on the fifth step, that that line is, is very high. But usually, you have some coaches leave and some coaches, you know, so it usually evens out in that area. So that's all the coaches and the athletic director's salary.
Yeah. So that's $393,000.
Yes.
Just because people don't have this paper at home.
Yes.
And then some supplies, $10,000, and equipment maintenance, $8,000. So it's about $410,000 out of the operating budget for athletics. User fees cover everything else and the fundraising.
Yep.
Right. So I guess my point is, we have a $52 million budget, $410,000 athletics. So provided that the user fees continue to fund what they are, you know, if we go back, Diten Rehoboth, last summer or spring, you know, there was talk of losing athletics. So I, I think it's important to bring that right out in the open, you know.
Don, that wasn't even just talk. They actually did it.
They did it.
They actually did it, and all the kids went the summer stressed out. A lot of, some kids left the district. It's a, it's a, and I, I give this committee a lot of respect for never doing that, because it's, sometimes people want to say, "Hey, if we do this, we go cut athletics, they're going to pack school, they're going to pack town meeting, and they're going to bring it back." And Jeff's opinion has always been, and with previous superintendent as well, is you don't want to make a threat you're not willing to keep. Right? And that was a very tough time for that community. In fact, I had a lot of people from that. I put that actually on my Twitter about the fact that I'm lucky as an athletic director to work in a community that our, our school committee doesn't do that. And I'm not saying that with the hope that you don't. But I've been, I, I do, I appreciate that, because we've had tough budget times. And it's easy for people to say, "Well, cut athletics." Well, obviously, it makes no sense from an economic standpoint. You cut athletics, and you end losing, you lose a couple hundred kids to school choice and to private schools, and now you've lost more money than you saved anyway. So from an economic standpoint, it doesn't make any sense. So that was really tough for them. They eventually restored it. I knew they would restore it, but it took a little while before they did.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the, the other option is, if you said, "Well, we've, we've got to find a way to pay this $410,000," then you up the user fee. And I'm not saying one or the other, or maybe we review it, and it'd be nice if we could reduce the user fee. But that's, you know, if you've, you know.
And then the, the problem with raising, like, some, there are some schools that try to do pay-as-you-go and say, "Hey, this is what it costs. This is what we want the user fee to be." But let's face it, then you have the haves and have nots. You have kids, we have sports like cross-country and track and swimming and wrestling that I'm, like, I'll be in the hallway trying, "Hey, you should go join this sport," and we'll walk a kid down. Imagine if I said that. "Oh, yeah, and it comes with a $500 bill, too." You know what I mean? And it's, it's, the user fee is something that you want to make sure that it's affordable for everybody in the community. So that's not a factor when they decide whether to play or not.
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Rogers, have you contacted Tony the Tiger yet? Have you not seen the commercials, Fruit Loops or Corn Flakes or whatever?
I actually don't watch much TV.
Well, believe me, I learned to become a recliner potato or whatever. They keep advertising, and I, I think that Kellogg's or whomever Tony the Tiger works for is coming to the game late, but they're saying, "If your schools are having problems with funding for athletics, we can help you out." Now, I don't want to see us kids eat so much sugar that their heads are spinning and they can't even focus on the sport or, or in the classroom. But I think this might be something else.
We did that a year ago.
Contact Tony the Tiger?
Well, five years ago, you had a fundraiser, you sold cereal.
We did the cereal, yeah.
Well, is that all it is?
I mean, heck, I think I still might have a few boxes at home.
That was, that was a different fundraiser.
On a case. I promised to get the cats off my lap and get out of the front.
Hey, if anybody has, anybody watching at home, or anybody here ever has any ideas for fundraising, please bring them to us. My ultimate-
Park and spaces.
Yeah. We tried that. My ultimate goal someday is get it so that the kids don't have to be fundraising for their uniforms, and they can be fundraising for, for their gear and for the things that help promote their programs. That would be my goal. Most schools are on a five-year cycle. My hope is that the, that the scoreboard gets to the point where it can bring in that revenue every year, and I can say, "We put, we'll be able to get their uniforms." Because it's, it's a trickle-down effect, you know, because it helps the JV and the freshmen as well.
Well, there's a huge, huge amount of also community, community support, that if you lost athletics, you would lose that support. You would not only lose a student in the base and the funding through that, you would lose local support when it comes to budget. It's not 100% about the academic part. Students, as you just saw, there was five kids from the superintendent's student council standing in front of us. Every one of them was in a sport, or two, or three, in a club, and there's more coming.
Right.
It's part of, at the end, she's still here. God bless you. So there's, there's a lot to be said about it for the $410,000. Anyone else? Before I move on. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
High School Program of Studies.
Good evening. And just to reiterate, without talking too long, George, but Bob does a fantastic job with our athletic program. Anybody that comes around and watches what, what comes out of it. It's not just about winning, losing, things like that. It's really about character and what's happening for students. So it is an integral part of the culture at Whitman Hansen. I'm looking to have you approve the Program of Studies for 2020, 2021 school year. It looks like a long list. There's 20 items listed out there for you. There are changes. Anything that was more than a grammatical change, we just listed out as far as information. It's not as lengthy as it looks. Numbers one through six and 18 through 20 are more changes for interests and opening up options to students and being able to give them better options with scheduling choices. So you'll see some courses that are offered every other year. They've moved to offer it every other year. Courses such as Modern China, that has shown not enough interest to run for, for multiple years gone by. That's been taken out so that we can move electives around and things like that and offer more. You'll notice a couple of things that I do want to point out when it comes to world language, which is number seven through 10. You'll notice some of the designations dropping and some updates to those courses. That reflects, those changes reflect a change in the philosophy and the pedagogy for the courses. Typically, when you take a foreign language course, which is now going to be called world languages, when you take that course, you do a lot of grammar. And I'm sure we can all remember the whole idea of, you know, past, present, all this stuff, and, and repeating the verbs and all that, and changing tense. They're moving away from that to where it's more proficiency-based. So it's the idea that you can take a student that has achieved at a higher level in our language courses, drop them off in that country of origin, and they'd be able to do fine. They'd be able to speak the language. So what you see happening in our classrooms now, in our world language classrooms now, is more conversation. They're actually accessing texts, reading texts, discussing texts in the target language, instead of going over all the grammar. One, one thing that, major thing that you see change with that is, we have a couple of classrooms that have gone deskless, because it promotes students talking. So students come in, and now they're conversing, and it's all about the target language rather than sitting and going over grammar. So those, the changes in those numbers reflect that. That's the, that's the basic language. And then a couple of other, a couple of courses that are affected by some standouts I want to explain are number 11, 12, and 15. Those are designated changes in level, and that has to do with some of the standouts that I'd like to explain. So if you turn your attention to number 13, that's Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications. I don't know if you recall, but the last time I came and spoke with you, we talked about how we had to make an adjustment to Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications to, to help out the classroom be more unified in what they're going as far as, doing as far as skill level. You'll notice that the next one in line, number 14, is that added course for seniors, that's Applications of Advanced Algebra. If you recall, we had that course put in for students moving from algebra to algebra two that weren't quite ready to take that step. We found that we had both seniors and juniors in the class, where seniors were more advanced than juniors to a degree where it either slowed the pace too much in the class, or the juniors that were coming into it got too frustrated with the level of material and shut down. So the decision has been made to split that into two different sections. So we'll have a section for seniors, which is the new added, and a section for juniors, which carries the same name that it did before. Number 16, you'll notice is Financial Literacy. That is now going to be a graduation requirement. It's been updated to reflect that it's a graduation requirement. And I do have some good news and want to thank you for approving it as a graduation requirement. The last time I appeared before you, so that we could solidify that grant that we got, I'm very pleased to announce Julie Gili, a member, I told you she submitted another grant for the state grant to support Financial Literacy. We have won that grant to the tune of another $11,770. So that makes a total of $21,770 that we're going to be able to utilize, putting towards Financial Literacy, the graduation requirement portion of it, credit for life, fair, different aspects of Financial Literacy like that around the school. So thank you for that. And then number 17, we have an experiential learning and leadership course, which deals with having students go out and do internships. Currently, as it sits, it's been bounced around a little bit. And when I was here last year, you heard about Brian Mariano, who was a teacher here. He's no longer a teacher. It was moved into the counseling suite with the counselors, which makes a lot more sense from my standpoint. They teach the course to the students. They address skills that they would need out in the job workforce. And then the students get internships or placements into companies that are out in the community. Some actually serve within the schools if they're interested in going into education. We're looking for a name change on that to internship, because we're looking to make adjustments to it. One of the first adjustments we're making is we're going to open it up to second semester juniors to bolster the numbers and offset some of the declining numbers we see from second semester seniors that are looking at, maybe it's a good idea at first, but then, no, I'd rather have a seminar, take, take advantage of senior privs, things like that. So that's the change there. And like I said, numbers 11, 12, 15 are courses that are just affected by the moving around and offerings of these other courses. Do you have any questions?
Before you move on, questions, I entertain a motion to accept the document in your packet as just reviewed.
So, so moved.
Questions? Discussion? For Mr. Jones, or anyone? Seeing none, I'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Run before you leave, Chris. We have this poll plunge coming up. And, you know, most of the administrators and quite a few of the school committee members.
One less. Sorry.
This is how you trapped me last year. Go ahead.
So, you know, I figured we were all going in, and I was going to try to stay, because I still have got this cold drive. But there's a rumor that you were going to tip me in.
I don't know what?
There's a rumor that I may get, you know, tipped in. Is there any truth to that?
I don't know. People have rumors about strange things. It could be fake news. You might have to check it. I don't know.
Fact-check that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Good time, too. Nice, nice time.
Yeah, it wasn't bad. It was brief.
Okay, academics.
So it's, we're starting to look, just as, as a teaser for you folks, looking at the FY, or not FY, school year 20, 2021. Labor Day this year is September 7. My, I'm going to tease this out there. I'm going to look at teachers probably coming in on October, or October, yeah, we're going to start in October, August 24th and 25th, and students starting the 26th, the 27th, and the 28th. The town of Hansen has asked us to have September 1st off as a local election day.
Yes.
And November 3rd is the presidential election day. I'd like to say, students are coming in the 26th, the 27th, the 28th, the 31st. They will not have school on the 1st. Teachers will have our election day PD day that day. Students will return on the 2nd and have a half day, or a full day on the 3rd. Excuse me, and be off on September 4th for the long Labor Day weekend. Okay? I'll draft that out for you. But again, teasing it out there, that Labor Day is late. If we go to the week before Labor Day, we're going to be pushed into the third week of June.
Right. We'll get out June 17. We will be out June 17 if we start where we normally do with Labor Day.
The week before Labor Day.
So late. So there are discussions that are going on, taking into what's happening in Hansen and their requests. We just want to sprinkle the infield a little bit and let you know that we, we might have some of these thoughts. They have to go through a lot of different ramifications, obviously, but we just wanted to let it be known so far.
So probably on, on the 26th of February, at our next real school committee meeting outside of budget, we'll present that calendar. So if you get feedback from your constituents over the next month, let me know, and we can make modifications to the calendar or have that discussion. But as people start planning next year and saying, "Well, when is school going to start?" We're looking at a late Labor Day, and I really like coming in earlier, so it gives us the opportunity if there is some snowfall in the year. So we're not going into the second or, or the third or fourth week of June.
So this is an FYI for the-
This is an FYI.
So if anyone else has heard, Mr. Howard.
So what do you think of Christmas? Christmas, if I'm looking at it correctly, falls on Friday, the 25th. What are you thinking for-
We're looking at the 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
So it'll be a Wednesday and then the fall.
As we've always done. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? It's nothing to vote on. It's just an FYI.
And then, I'm sorry, election day, November, all schools will be closed.
All schools will be closed that day.
Yeah, we're going to have to vote on that, though, so bring that all back.
Yep, bring it all back.
Just because the town clerk, if you recall at the last meeting, I read that, that she had requested that, Hansen Town Clerk. Before I go into field trip requests, I'm just going to read a couple of letters. These are more than valid. This is to Richard Spencer, President, Chief Executive Officer of Northeastern Savings. Dear Mr. Spencer, on behalf of Louise, Louise A. Conley Elementary School, I'd like to thank you and the members of the Northeastern Savings Bank for your incredible generous gift of $14,160. We will utilize the funds to support our technology initiatives with Chromebooks for classrooms. With your help, Conley, Conley School continues to advance its mission of 21st century education for their students. It's a longer letter. I'm going to cut to the chase. Thank you very much, the Northeastern Savings Bank, for doing- Thank you very much, the Northeastern Savings Bank, for donating $14,160. What a valid community member that bank is for this district. And thank you very much. And it's signed, Karen Downey, Principal.
Would you be looking for a motion to accept the gift?
It's, I believe we already have accepted it.
Well, we haven't formally accepted it here. We have a check.
So moved. We have a check. I'm going to accept the gift. Second.
I get it all over the house. Any discussion about accepting $14,160?
I am going to accept it. Can we just read the part of the letter? Because I have had someone ask me, how did Conley get this? Like, why did it go to that?
With recent budget cuts, the majority of funding for any additional enrichment programs or materials comes from the funding efforts of each individual school. It is challenging work. One of our goals as the administrative team is to provide technology that supports learning in an engaging way for every classroom. Your generous donation has made it possible to purchase 60 Chromebooks. What a wonderful surprise as we entered into the holiday season. We're extremely grateful for your partnership and hope to continue the relationship for many years. It was our great pleasure to meet with Ms. Dahlia Cardoza, Assistant Vice President and Branch Officer of the Whitman Branch of Northeastern Savings Bank. Ms. Cardoza attended our monthly meetings, all school meetings on Friday, December 20th, 2019, and she presented us with a check. She spoke to our students about being good neighbors and fostering relationships. How about that? This bank is on the ball. She told them that she had heard about good things they do to help our community, like our donations to the Food Bank and charities that help that children and that your community wanted to do something to support our Conley kids. There was cheering and, yes, even a few tears. She turned the check around to display the amount and we are so very grateful. The goal of our school is to continue to make a difference in the education of each child by providing the best possible instruction. With the help of donations from supporters such as you and Northeastern Savings Bank, we will continue to see improvements in every classroom for our students as they become ready to learn, investigate, and challenge themselves. Thank you again for your very generous support of the Louise A. Conley School. Best wishes, Karen Downey, Principal. And again, thank you very much. I have another letter. Mr. Sh-
Did we vote?
I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is from Mr. Shane Schraut, care of Mr. Warner Scoutmaster, Troop 22, 15th Old Colony, Webb Whitman. Dear Shane, on behalf of the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee and the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, I commend you for earning the Eagle Scout Award, the highest rank a young man can earn with the Boy Scouts of America. This is a wonderful achievement and great reflection on your diligence and commitment. We acknowledge and applaud your efforts and thank you for your dedication to your community. The work you have done at St. John's Episcopal Church in Holbrook is especially praiseworthy. What an excellent idea, creating a mediation garden. I commend the work you did not only level in the area and relocate the benches along the path, but to take the time and effort to rebuild the cross was thoughtful. Thank you for your efforts in fundraising for your materials. You have created a small haven for personal thought and reflection. It is a substantial endeavor to work with others to organize and manage any type of project to accomplish your vision. Your family, your troop, and your community are very proud that you set out to become an Eagle Scout and you have successfully achieved that goal. The skills and the values that you have learned along the way will be reflected in your decisions and goals throughout your life. We wish you the best at your Eagle Court of Honor on January 19th, 2020, and in the future. Congratulations and best wishes, Jeff Simonak, Superintendent of Schools. Another great thing that goes on here at Whitman Hanson Regional School District. Okay. Field trip requests. DECA State Conference from 2/27 to 2/29, 2020. They're going to the Copley Marriott in Boston. It's their state conference. There's approximately 20 students going. This is a yearly event. Tom DeSantis and Nita Consolini are the chaperones. They are going to, transportation is needed. They will not need a school nurse. Is this facility has emergency personnel? An entertaining motion to-
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Bob, excuse me, just one more thing on field trips. As you know, and Dr. Jones is here, as you know, our students at the high school are flying to Australia and Australia has been in the news quite a bit regarding their wildfires. I was just going to, if I can have a minute for Chris to just update the committee on where we're going and if the trip is still on.
Just a quick update. We've been monitoring the situation over in Australia, both through the United States State Department and local authorities in Australia through EF Tours and contacts they have there. We've been receiving information back and forth, multiple conversations, looking at possible alternatives, things like that. But right now, where we stand is that the trip is going to proceed as normal. They've been looking at longitudinal data as far as air quality. We're considering air quality. We're considering the social, emotional impact as far as anxiety or anything like that. And right now, reports on the ground in Australia that we keep getting updates through EF Tours and through our State Department using their local resources, using, technology's a great thing, cameras on the ground in Sydney from building tops and things like that to look at the air. It looks like it's going to be fine. Where the wildfires are, that's not an area where the students are going to be going. And in some of the instances, at one point, we're going to, the students are going to the far north. If it weren't for media, TV, news, things like that, those individuals wouldn't even know there were fires burning. It kind of equates to when we have California wildfires going on and we're here, how much it's affected. There is some unrest, obviously, among parents. For the most part, it's been neutral. There have been some positive comments. We've had a couple individuals that have contacted us, not negative, but just very concerned because obviously they're sending their students. Mr. Davidson, who's in charge of the trip, has proactively reached out to those parents. He has not gotten in contact with all of them, but they are holding an information night, a typical information night that they normally have before these trips, tomorrow evening. And tomorrow evening, he's going to be presenting all that information as far as air quality, showing all the longitudinal data, showing the local information on the ground, information provided by EF Tours and by our State Department to the parents to show them that it is safe where they are going.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you.
We'll give you an update on February 5th if anything changes. We'll modify if need be.
All right, I have one more. Dear members of the school committee, parents, support and involvement is a highlight of a successful school community. The Indian Head School is fortunate and pleased to be able to say that we have both. Through the active involvement of families and fundraising activities this year, our PTO has raised funds to support not only many cultural events for our students, but also some very important items that will help enhance the environment of our schools and student learning. As at our last PTO meeting, PTO generously approved to gift the Indian Head School the following items. 10 air conditioning units to be installed in the classrooms at a cost of $9,326.50. 30 Chromebooks at the cost of $7,080. On behalf of the Indian Head School, we would like to accept these gifts and acknowledge the generosity of the PTO and all the support they give our school committee. Throughout the leadership of Melissa Valtkevich and Kate Dooley and all the board members, Indian Head School continues to be a successful school community. Thank you for all that you do. Respectfully, Gary Pelletier, Principal, Jennifer Costa, Assistant Principal. An entertaining motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
It is amazing, as we go through what we talk about in funding, that all of these people, it goes back to community support, that they supply the community support that they do, that we have the volunteers that we have and the people that come forward. And I believe part of this money came from the polar plunge from last year. I'm not totally sure, but I believe it did. So, having said that, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you to all the volunteers. It's fabulous. Okay. Subcommittee reports. An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of December 18th, 2019, warrant Subcommittee.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of January 2nd, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, so Facilities and Capital Improvement Subcommittee, I don't believe met since the last time.
We haven't met, but I just wanted to give, before we have our next facilities meeting, which will be February 26th, we'll meet. Ernie found out a week and a half ago, well, last, a week and a half ago, about the clawback time for the Duval roof. We were under the impression from MSBA, we could submit an SOI for the Duval roof repairs after 20 years, and this is year 20. So, we've been waiting on that to do, to do that. He contacted our person Jennifer at MSBA. That's the person we're working with, with the SOI for the Whitman Middle School, and she informed him that the clawback period now is 27 years. We spoke to the Whitman Override Committee about that the other day because it affects Whitman finances. Whitman has put away $500,000 towards the Duval roof already. Fred actually contacted me about maybe a solution to that with our state representative helping us out in a certain way. So, I just wanted to turn it over to Fred.
I contacted Allison Sullivan's office and expressed the dismay. We have some records, or at least I had some records within my emails, showing that we were refused an SOI back in 2015, 2016. We submitted in 15, but it was in 2016 we were refused it.
That's correct.
Because we didn't, it would have to satisfy the clawback, even though Diane Sullivan told us to submit it. I'm in the process, with just permission, to go through. Ernie grabbed the submittals that we sent and tried and get every document that we can showing the timeline, present them to Allison. She'll look at everything and we'll try and come up with anything that they can do to help us on a state level as far as that goes.
The thing that Jen had told us around the clawback, too, they made that ruling because of the amount of SOIs that have come in. She said, that doesn't mean it's set in stone for the next 10 years. They could bounce that to 25, they could bounce it to 21, whatever. I appreciate that, that reach out to Allison and we'll work together to see what we can do to make those repairs to Duval and with the state, with the state help that would, that would be beneficial. So, nothing that Ernie did at this point. He was moving forward and he got the rejection at that point.
Okay. Legislative update.
We heard about the Student Opportunity Act. We heard about being funded for some regional transportation. We've already discussed the quote-unquote subject to appropriation language that is in most of our monies that we seem to want to gain. It's a wait-and-see attitude, governor's budget, 22nd state of the, state is the 21st. Go from there.
Okay.
Other than that, pretty quiet on the Western Front.
Questions? Pilgrim area collaborative?
We will be meeting the first Thursday in February, February 6th. We have not met for the last two months. Mr. Chairman, if I can add one more thing?
Sure.
With the change in the calendar to 2020, I'm embarking on my sixth decade of volunteering within either Whitman Hanson or the Whitman Public Schools. And I'm looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Dates to remember, Monday, January 20th, 2020, no school. Martin Luther King Day is observed. Central offices will be closed. Friday, January 20th, 2020, pre-K to 12, early release. It's grading day. Sunday, January 26th, 2020, Hanson PTO, Polar Plunge, Camp Kewaunee, 8:30 a.m. to 11:00. Any of you that want to donate, as you can see, they spend the money for the school district. You can go online and there is a way to donate if you look into Polar Plunge. You can look up any of us that are crazy enough to go in their cold water. Donate to the individuals and the money goes directly to the good things that happen here at Whitman Hanson Regional School District. We need to have an executive session to discuss strategy of respect. Collect the bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and I believe it has. So, I'll take a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Yes.
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 We will be taking no votes other than voting to adjourn when we come out. Thank you, everyone.